Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call this Orangeburg County Council Meeting of May 21st, 2018.
Could I bow with me, Priff? Well, we just thank you for this day and for this opportunity, Lord, that you give us that we might come together with the council and discuss the business in this county. Amen.
Amen. Again, we'd like to welcome you to our meeting tonight. And first, I hope each and every one of council members have had the opportunity to look at the minutes of previous meeting of May the 7th. And we ask if you did, please, could I get a motion in a second that those minutes be received as written, please? Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and seconded by Mr. Ravenell, that those minutes be received as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Again, at the beginning of our meetings, we have public comments in two areas. Public comments of agenda items, that mean any items on the agenda unless it falls under public hearing on that item, and if it is, then you will wait until that time to comment. And then after that, we have public comments of other matters, that mean any other matters that you would like to bring before council, you may bring it at that time. Tonight, we want, before we start, I have, council have a public comment that it would like to present to citizens of the county. And we have discussed and we all pretty well united on this. County council understands the concerns from some of the citizens around the county about the situation in the jailbreak. And our administration have given us a breakdown of what happened. Council is asking for a full investigation of the situation through personnel's and procedures that goes on in there. And we want this to be reported back to council in writing when the finding is discovered, what happened and why it happened, to try to make sure that this don't happen again. And we are hoping that law enforcement will be able to apprehend all of these individuals as soon as possible so that we can go back to our normal operation in our county. We thank you all for your consideration and understanding in the situation. We live in times that things will happen at times. Thank you so very much. Now, the floor is open for public comments of agenda items. Harry Nunville, close that portion of it and go into our regular public comments of other matters and the topic.
The topic is having chickens roosting stuff in the wrong neighborhood. I can't get no rest at night, start crowing at 3:00 and stop at 7 or 8:00. And I think that should be taken care of. I bought that house for a retirement house where I can rest and get some sleep. I go to sleep after 12:00 and the rooster start crowing at 3:00. And don't stop until 7 or 8:00. So I would like for the county to do something about it.
Do we have any regulation that you know in place to deal with that, Mr. Administrator?
Working on that through animal control. I personally went out there after the last meeting and rode that area myself to try to talk the individuals about handling it a different way than the remove the chickens. But we need to go another route and see what else we can do through animal control. And talked with Councilman Owens as well. He was brief and we actually rode that area right after the last council meeting to hear her concerns. Concerns are valid, but in this case, our constituents are trying to say that a rooster is a pet instead of a yard bird or a parrot. We define a chicken, and it's a little bit more intricate than that, but we're working on the situation.
I appreciate the people in that neighborhood trying to keep their neighborhoods clean. I think that's important because I have proposed that we give an improved neighborhood award around the county to neighborhoods improve, the most improved neighborhood in the county of keeping their neighborhoods clean. And anything we can do to help you keep that neighborhood clean, public nuisance, yard cutting and all of those, we need to do it.
Have you taken that to the group there?
We haven't had a meeting.
Since December?
But, I mean, the people tend to don't want to listen. They wouldn't do right if it killed them. I done talked to the people next door to me about the dog running off the, you know, not on a leash and stuff. That dog be loose every day. I done called Animal Patrol. I even got pictures on my tablet with the dog up in Nine Street.
Thank you so much for your saying. We will certainly, Mr. Owens and the administrator in the county will try to, sometime it takes a little minute to get certain things on out. So just be patient and stay consistent like you are. Any other comments? Harry Nunville, we'll close that portion of the agenda and we're going to our regular agenda. And first item on the agenda is presentation from Project Life Protein. I'm not going to yield too much, Liz. Good afternoon, young man.
My name is Michael Davis with Project Life Positive Team.
Davis?
To Mr. Right, county council members and friends, we, Project Life Positive Team Incorporated, our director, Ms. Kidd, and staff, thank you for the opportunity to present our display of South Carolina Tobacco Collaborative Non Smoking Status. In an effort to protect environmental quality and contribute to health and well-being of all citizens, we are asking all smokers to prohibit smoking in public places, including parks and outdoor facilities. People who live in the South can expect to die three to four years earlier than that in California or other states. We are asking all Americans to help our communities to be safe by helping us prevent smoking in all places. Thank you and God bless America.
The non-smoking, we're trying to prohibit smoking in public places, parks, and wherever we are because it is killing our people, our display. And we want everyone to take a look at our display that we have set up. Ensure you wear the lungs. When you smoke a year, your lungs gonna look like this. We want people to be healthy and safe. Your teeth. And you see some people with bad teeth. It's not because of what they eat, it's because of smoking. So we're asking everyone that know and see people that are smoking in public places, the non-smokers are being affected more than the smoker. So that's why we would love to have people stop smoking in public places. Team from Project Life Positive Team. And we're competing with several counties for an award on July 27th in Columbia, South Carolina. So we want our program to really be dynamic. Any questions?
They got, it's the same topic or something?
No, they have different, we have different topics.
Okay, okay.
Yes. But everything centered around health.
Health issues, okay.
The HYP, healthy young people in public.
I like that.
Yes.
Any questions for Ms. Kidd, for many council members?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Your main focus with that group is why, Project Positive Team?
Oh, it's to help young people, to encourage them on how to organize, do things in the community, be healthy. We, our project is drinking more water than usual because if we don't teach our young people how to drink water, they're not gonna be very healthy. Look at my age, I drink water every day, all day. And I am really ready to move forward. So we are asking people to be healthy, and you can be if you eat and drink water. That's right, drink, drink water. Healthy, yes.
Second item on the agenda tonight is an audit, third meeting, this is an audit authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Court of Law of South Carolina, as amended the agreement by and between Orangeburg County and Project Oz as a sponsor and one or more sponsors affiliate to provide for a fee in lieu of ever-earning taxes, incentive and certain special source revenue credit. The amendment of the existing amended and reinstated agreement for development of joint county industrial park by and between Orangeburg County and Dorchester County to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain properties located in Orangeburg County and now and ought to be hereafter owned and operated by Project Oz or one or more companies related there to. Third thing is the conveyance of certain property to Project Oz. And fourth is other related matters. This is the third and final reading of this audit to cover Project Oz. Could I get a motion in a second that just be received?
Mr. Chairman, I move for third and final reading of Project Oz. Round second.
Moved by Mr. Billy Beards, seconded by Mr. Harry Wimbley for third and final reading of Project Oz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds to it? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Item number three, second reading audit, and this is an audit of the county council of Orangeburg County permitting the zoning map of the unincorporated Orangeburg County to change the zoning designation for the real property described as tax map number 0154-17-01-011 from residential general district to rural community district and providing for a servility and effective date. Mr. Administrator or Mr. Attorney, whoever, could you give just a quick summary on this for us, those who may not have been at previous meeting?
The planning commission met on April 11th, 2018 to discuss the request for Mr. Edgeman. This was the rezoning property at 114 Amadeus Drive, Codova, Council District 3. So it's changed from rural general to rural community to allow a single-wide home property. There was no opposition to the request petition that was submitted by the neighbors that were in favor of it, and the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval.
You've heard the explanation from the administrator. Could I get a motion in a second for pass for this second reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Wimbley and seconded by Mr. Owens for second reading on this audit. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, and motions carried.
This is inside the city, inside town, the Mrs. Codova, right?
No, sir.
No?
It's in the unincorporated area.
Codova.
It's not in the, not in the town.
We need to double check that.
I'll verify it. It should be on the map in the folder, but yeah, it's not in the town.
Put that.
We'll double check it. But according to our, according to our parcels, it's not.
Man, that would throw it inside of some kind of jurisdiction, that 17, wouldn't it?
In most cases, it would, but you would really have to look close at the map. It could be close to a municipality.
And parcel could be split too. That particular parcel could be half in the town, half out.
I'll get the information for you, but we'll verify it.
Item number four is a second reading also, and this is basically same type of situation, just a different tax map number.
Yes, sir.
But this one is changed from forest agriculture to commercial general.
This is the property located at 6204 Charleston Highway in Bowman. This basically is being changed. It was a convenience store, but the owner wants to add a mardi bai, so that's a change in scope. And so it has to come back before people will own it, but it's a property that's been right out of town in Bowman and it's been vacant for a long time, so it's good to see that type of growth in one of our rural communities. And it was recommended and unanimously voted for approval by the planning commission.
Thank you, sir. Any question from council?
I know where that one is.
Okay, all right. Could I get a motion in second for pass?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ravenell and seconded by Mr. Edward Livingston that we pass second reading on this and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, and motions carried. Item five also is a similar situation, and this is second reading. This one also is changing it from residential general district to rural community district.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is a rezoning for the purpose of putting a home, 219 St. Stroman Street. This is in District 6, which is the Seville's district. Request came from Helen Fraser and the planning commission voted unanimously to approve.
Any question? Ms. Seville, you got any question under that?
Yeah.
Could I get a motion in a second for passes?
I move that we pass the second reading.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Seville, I mean, seconded by Mr. Harry Wimbley that we pass second reading on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, and motions carried. Item six and seven are related to Sam Project. One of them is, audit, some first reading, execution delivery of infrastructure credit agreement by and between Orangeburg County and Project Paris, providing for payment of special source revenue credit and other matters related there to. Item seven is an audit authorizing an amendment to the amended reinstated agreement for development of a joint county industrial park dated May 17, 2010, as to include additional properties in Orangeburg County and Project Paris as part of that joint industrial park and other matters related there to. Pretty well self-explanatory on that, unless someone have a special question over the administrator. You want to add anything for the public on that?
No, sir.
Could I get a motion in a second, unless council have a question? Could I get a motion in a second for six and seven for a reading?
Mr. Chairman, I move for first reading on six and seven of the audience.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Owens, seconded by Ms. Seville that we have second, first reading on six and seven. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, and motions carried. Item eight is audit by, first reading by Tal Owen, and this has to do with our budget, and it is an audit of the general fund budget to provide for appropriation for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, for the Orangeburg County budget for ordinary county purposes for which the county may levy a tax to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable personal and real estate properties, insufficient tax to pay for the principal and interest on the outstanding indebtedness of the county maturing during the fiscal year, to provide for matters relating to Orangeburg County and to provide for the expenditures of taxes and other revenues coming through the county during the fiscal year. And item nine, which is, also has to do with the budget, it is by Tal Owen, and it is an audit of special education budget to provide for appropriation for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019, for the Orangeburg County Technical College, the Orangeburg County Disability and Special Needs Board, vocational rehabilitation, and for other public and special education to provide for the levy of taxes and other revenues to the county during the fiscal year for all such purposes. Any other comments on that or any questions?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, we've been working on the budget diligently. We've had outside agency hearings and so far, unless we run into some unforeseen situations, we hope to present you a balanced budget that requires no mileage increase.
Okay, council, could I get a motion in a second for first reading?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, seconded by Mr. Ravenell for first reading by Tal Owen on two budget items. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, and motions carried. Item number 10 is procurement, and we have three procurements. I guess we'll take them one at a time. One of them is fiscal year 18-0501 in Orangeburg County Class 2 landfill, Stone Water Pond. Mr. Administrator, you want to take them one at a time? Or you want me to just read them all three and you go over them with the council or how you want to do that?
Whatever, it's your choice. I can do that.
I think we probably sense all of them. The first two is, well, all of them are different, so let's just do them one at a time.
Okay. All right. First one is a request for proposal FY 180501. This is a proposal for a landfill in Stone Water Pond as part of the construction to open up the new part of the landfill for the expansion. It was placed in Skevo, T and D, and there were six proposals that were received. We implemented all the local and state preferences. However, the lowest bidder was for Envire Smart out of Charleston, South Carolina, worth $120,784 proposal.
I've seen such a wide variation. I call out prices. I just say it's a wide variation of prices, and so I'm sure that we have checked out the vendor.
Yes, sir.
Highest ranking, so he's...
This is a specific type of stone water that is basically designed for a landfill versus other areas. So Envire Smart has that type of experience where they mostly focus on the landfill environmental stuff. Rest of these are just construction companies taking a stab at building retainage pond in a, in a landfill.
Got you. Any questions? Council, plan, or... If not, could I get a motion in a second for approval on that? First, item A.
So moved. Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, seconded by Mr. Billy Beards that we pass approval of item A of procurement on Stone Water Pond. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it.
But, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Except dirt, we will stop power for further leverage.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just don't let them at all, no, no?
No, sir. If we stop power, that landfill, we're coming for it. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dirt is precious commodity. We use it. All the construction that we have going on, we needed it like yesterday.
Got that, right.
And feel all they're making them all step away in July.
Thank you so much for the observation, Mr. Wimbley. Thank you, Mr. Administrator, for also making sure that you carry it through. Item B is the Gateway Monument signs and landscaping at Highway I-26 and 601.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is proposal FY 180516 that was part of the Gateway project that's been spoke of through DOT and the other funding sources that we've been going after for part of project on Orangeburg County. This is proposals was put in advertising in T and D and Skevo. They were due on May 16, 2018. County received four proposals. We implemented state, local preference, and however, the highest ranked and lowest vendor was Ace Development out of Hilton Head, South Carolina, in amount of $328,725.
I know, I know, we're going after a grant, but has it been approved?
That, the portion for the signs, yes, yes, sir.
Okay. We not approving something and hoping for it?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we got that approval and for the mask arms and for the updates to 601. Yes, sir. Now, you know, there still will be some pink funds that go along with it.
I know, but I mean, the majority of it coming from DOT.
Yes, sir.
Has been approved by DOT?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Could I get a motion in a second for approval of that?
I say aye.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Seville, seconded by Mr. Owens that we approve item B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, and motions carried. Item C is renovation for the...
Mr. Chairman, this is FY 180517. This is a request to do renovations to Orangeburg County Council Chambers. Renovation includes part of the new overall computer aspects, all the technology needed in the modern day environment of doing council meeting, as well as the cosmetic renovations to the chamber to alleviate trip hazards and make it other areas that will be more susceptible to council environment. Proposals were advertised in the T and D and Skevo. They were due on May 17th. We had seven proposals, and after the local and state vendors, there was an Orangeburg County vendor that was lowest vendor, which was FE Gaskins out of Orangeburg, South Carolina in amount of $176,081.
I am very happy to see it's somewhere in the county.
Yes.
So the taxes will stay there and also see that most of these are very close and related to it. We had quite a few people that bid, so that's, that's real healthy when you can get that kind of bidding on it. Any other comments from anyone? Questions?
Well, we will, we will have to have an augmented schedule, but we typically skip a meeting during the course of July and August because of the association of counties. And during July, after the budget is passed, we typically skip one as well. So between the two, we should be able to make it work around those two meetings that you already gonna have not scheduled. If we run into some delays, we may have to have one council meeting on the third floor, but there would be proper notice given to the public weighing in.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Ravenell, seconded by Mr. Owens that we approve item C, renovation of county council chambers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, and motions carried. Item number 11 is an update from the Parks Recreation and Agriculture Committee and I'll yield to its chair, woman, Cooper Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Parks Recreation and Agriculture Committee met today and was presented with a list of general park and playground rules and regulations. The committee made the motion to accept the general park and playground rules and regulations and recommend that certain changes be made in that council will accept the recommendation of those changes.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and seconded by Mr. Edward Livingston, two members from the committee that we accept the recommendation with the recommended changes that was discussed during the meeting. All in favor of that, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds on that? The ayes have it, and motions carried. Item number 12, a vote for executive session, and executive session include economic development update following projects, Project Oz, Project Olive, Project IPS, and miscellaneous general economic updates. Could I get a motion in a second for executive session for those following our items, please?
Ms. Seville, second.
Moved by Ms. Seville, seconded by Ms. Cooper Smith that we do an executive session for those items that were mentioned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? The ayes have it, and motions carried. Before we ask for a motion of adjournment, do I have any comments for any council members? Mr. Owens?
Mr. Chairman, I received quite a few calls this weekend about water. Some people could not get into their homes. I referred them to our county administrator. Mr. Waiters, gentlemen, do we have the ability to deal with the problem that you receive about water conserving drainage?
After the rain that we had the other day?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We have the capability through emergency services to handle those situations. I talked and met with Kevin Gant with DOT. A lot of this has to do with the, with the overall watershed and work that has to be done within, within the county. Now, one thing, we have to be honest with you. When we get the amount of rain we get in that short span, some of these properties are repetitive flood properties that because they're in lowland areas, the same thing has happened on several occasions. So there are certain FEMA grants and projects that we have been looking into that we've been helping individuals define those properties as repetitive loss properties so they can work with FEMA to decide if they're gonna stay there to do some type of renovation to get it above the base flood elevation or leave it the way it is. In some cases in your district, several of those entities happen to be next to that canal. And that canal is a, is a huge and deep canal, but still, if the water comes, most of the water from the watershed throughout the greater city of Orangeburg flows through that canal, through that watershed to get out to the water basins that are out in the rural areas. So it just happens to be that if you have enough rain flow, there's no guarantee that that will not happen again. The problem is, we have to work with DOT to expand and do something to correct that because those are DOT maintained ditches, not county outflows.
Thank you, sir. About four months ago, a little longer, the senior senators from South Carolina was here to meet with us.
Yes, sir.
At that time, I requested of him that he provide to us the Army Corps of Engineers to do some studies in terms of drainage in around Orangeburg area.
Yes, sir.
Have you heard from him?
Yes, sir. And we started the process of overall drainage study for the entire basin within Orangeburg County. It's been started. We focused on that area at the time he was here. I remember that the major flooded area was actually in the eastern end. We had a situation where it just flooded in Holly Hill and again in Utah Hill. Aside from the flood that we had because most of the water had receded in Orangeburg, they started some of the drawing and designing in that area, but the entire county is being looked at with the drugs, with the flood situation through the court and through us locally, as well as working with Lawrence County.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other comment from anyone? Ms. Miller?
It's on Saturday, we had at Mount Park an unveiling of the Martin Luther King statue on the courthouse run. For those of you who were not there, please go by and take a look. I know teachers will probably be bringing their students to view the statue. It is a real life looking statue of Martin Luther King, who was a civil rights leader for the people and a Nobel Peace Prize winner. So we have a statue now. You don't have to just look at it. You don't have to just look in a book and see a picture of Martin Luther King. You don't have to just look on television, whenever there is one, you see him. You want, you can, the closest thing to him is downtown in front of the courthouse.
One, one other comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is, is it possible to have a dedication ceremony in, in honor of that statue? You know, the, the man did, did so much for us, not just here, but all over the world. And I, I know we gonna always have some people who oppose it. I, I don't care what we do, we can give them all a slice of pie or pizza.
Work for you as council, if you guys direct me to do that, we'll get it done.
Any other comments? If not, could I have a motion and a second for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, second by Mr. Owens, that we adjourn. Thank you all so very much for attending our meeting tonight.